The, uh, the display out in the lobby and then make your way in and, uh, I'll tell you, it is really, really good to see these, um, would-be city councilors and mayors in our group today. Okay? You're gonna be, you're gonna be the future of our community, so it's good to welcome everyone here. Again, tonight, it's a work session, and typically in a work session, how we handle a work session is this is the opportunity for the city council to get, gather information and have a dialogue. And so tonight, that's what we're going to be doing. And so, uh, we'll call the, the meeting to order, and we have our, uh, Park and Recreation Director, uh, who, by the way, we had a great, we had a great ribbon cutting and dedication of the Jay Pearson and the Quanus Park, so those that were there, thank you. When you get home tonight and get your mail, Tom did a good job of writing that up. It was a very, it was a very exciting day for the city, uh, with this very low-barrier uh, equipment that, uh, those that have disabilities, uh, can, it can be facilitated that they can use the playground. And if you've not been out there, and you're, and you're not a fan, well, you must be a fan of Boise State, because we've got, we've got bluegrass out there, okay? But, uh, that's another story. But again, uh, I'd like to thank the Park and Rec Department for putting on a great uh, event last Saturday, and, and I know that Jay and Becky were very excited for, for the day. Well, that being said, I think Susan, we'll turn the time over to you. Uh, we have a, uh, presentation of, um, of the feasibility studies, so we'll be going over that. So Susan?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm Susan Muir, I'm the Parks and Rec Director here in McMinnville, and, uh, happy to be here. It's an exciting night today. We've had a big week in Parks and Rec, so this is another exciting night. We have quite a few more people here from the community than we did at the July 17th work session, so we'll take some time to give an introduction to the project and why we're here. Um, the Parks and Rec staff is all here, they might still be out in the lobby, but Ann Lane is here as well. Oh, there she is, right there. Um, you'll find Ann's name on the webpage, which I'll go over in a minute, as the project manager for this, um, so she's able to answer any questions. And we also have Rob Porter from the Aquatic Centers here, Katie Noid from the Community Center, and Steve Ganzer from Recreational Sports. That's the Parks and Rec team. And then, of course, you know, we have a consulting team that has been helping us along the way, and Ken Ballard is here with us tonight, um, to walk us through this stage of the report. I'm going to just pick up where I left off a little bit when we kicked it off back in July, which is to talk about, um, what we're doing here. Uh, you all know, we have about ninety-three thousand square feet in facilities just in the Parks and Rec Department. We have an aquatic center, a community center, and a senior center. And we know from some architectural reports that we've had years of deferred maintenance on those facilities, and so much so that people may notice the buckets of water to catch the dripping roof out there, or if you're walking on the track at the community center, you may notice that there's a bucket or, um, a mop out to pick up some, um, water from when we have a heavy rain. And we've, uh, we've outgrown these excellent facilities that have served our community for so long. Um, so when we look at ninety-three thousand square feet, you'll remember last time I was telling you what we could actually put in that square footage if we look at that type of a building and structure on its own. Um, so what we have now is a basketball court, and a track, and a swimming pool, two swimming pools, and a senior center with a lot of programmable space. And when you look at what we could put in that space, um, we talked about this last time, we could put six hockey rinks, eighteen basketball courts, forty tennis courts, six hundred parking spaces, over one hundred pickleball courts, or seven Olympic-sized pools. So when you look at square footage, it kind of changes the way we look at our existing facilities. So, um, since the July 17th work session at the Community Center, we had some great discussions, not only with the consultants over the last couple of months, but also with the community. Individually, the Park and Rec managers had really good one-on-one conversations, some as recently as the Jay Pearson Neighborhood Park opening. We had several conversations with people there. Um, and we also met with, uh, Marilla Martins and Andrew Jones of the McMinnville Swim Club, and had a great conversation about, um, their needs and what they're looking for, and kind of how we look at the current aquatic center. Um, we also met with about ten representatives from the Mc- McMinnville Pickleball Club, and we continue to have regular meetings with the McMinnville, or the Friends of the Senior Center, and I think all of those groups are represented here tonight. Um, I wanna take the opportunity to thank our current building users, because they've been great partners on this, and as you can see by the numbers in the room tonight, we're slowly gaining momentum and talking more about it, and broadening our footprint of who knows about this project, and who's willing to be engaged and give us feedback and that sort of thing. So, having said that, I think at the last work section, work session, we may not have taken the opportunity to be as direct about, um, that we're not talking about reducing any of our facilities or our footprints. We're talking about new and, in some cases, bigger, depending on what the community said. So, I don't think we articulated that enough at the July 17th work session, particularly related to the pool. What we're talking about is either recreating the similar space of what we have, or looking at things in a little bit bigger lens. We know it's very important to maintain the number of spectator seats at our facilities, and the lanes, and the, um, the length of those. So, so we're starting with that in most of our facilities. Um, I also wanna say that this is a multi-step process, so we're now coming to you for the second time. This is a draft final report of our initial exploratory discussions. Um, this will take many steps in the future as well. We've done some public involvement every step of the way, whether that's online or out here in the lobby, which was a great crowd tonight, uh, and we, there will be many more opportunities for people to weigh in on those kinds of, before we get to a decision-making process. Um, we're, we have a sign-up sheet out, uh, in the lobby, and anybody that wants to either get regular notifications of what's happening with this project, and/or if anybody's interested on ser- in serving on an advisory committee, they should put their email address out there for us, um, and we'll take advantage of that. I also wanted to note that we're posting everything from every phase of this project at the webpage, uh, whaddoyouthinkmac.org, so you can find the video and the staff report from July 17th, and the one from today as well. And we also have a place where you can sign up or contact the staff related to that. And for those of you who get the Quarterly Recreation Guide, that newsprint thing that shows up in your mailbox that talks about the classes we offer in Parks and Rec, uh, we'll be putting updates in there as well. That's where we announced this meeting, and we'll continue to sort of summarize where we're at. So we have a lot to talk about tonight, and most importantly, we have access to Ken Ballard, who is a national expert on building these types of facilities, and he's done a lot of work and a lot of, um, thought about financing and programming and partnerships since we last talked to you, so I wanna make sure, and I'll hand it over to him. Um, I have heard a lot of people in the audience asking, "How long is this presentation?" I think Ken will probably talk for about twenty minutes-ish, and we'll leave plenty of time for you all to ask questions. And just a reminder that this is, the video will be online, and we'll put a link to it on the webpage, whaddoyouthinkmac.org.
And I'll remind everyone that, uh, Councilor Drapkin is on the telephone. Uh, she's in the midst of crush, and so, but she's with us, and then Wendy Stassen is, um, she has an excused absence this evening, she's in a conference in band, so...
I'll turn it over to Ken.
Uh, well, good evening again, and Ken Ballard with Ballard King &amp; Associates, we're the lead firm, uh, and, on the project, and, uh, with, uh, MIG, and also with Opsis Architecture. Cindy Mendoza with Mig was supposed to be here this evening as well, but, uh, she can barely talk with laryngitis, so, uh, we excused her, 'cause I could barely, uh, understand what she was telling me on the phone, so, then we didn't figure that was gonna be much good. So, anyway, what I'd like to do over the next twenty to thirty minutes is kind of review very quickly what we did up to this point and up to that July meeting, so we kind of know where we came from, and then focus, obviously, our efforts on what's transpired since July, and kind of where we sit now with, uh, the final draft report. This is very much going to be kind of a high elevation review of, of where we are. There's certainly, uh, a lot of detail we could go into, but we'll save that if you have specific questions when we're done. So, uh, we'll go ahead and get started. Uh, just to remind everybody, these were the project goals when we first started out. It was to do a physical assessment of the existing facilities, and again, we brought that forward at the July meeting. Uh, little, Susan kind of touched a little bit on that as well, uh, was develop, uh, a recreation program plan, and that was really driven by a, a public input process, as we'll talk about, and really starts to get at, so, what do people in McMinnville wanna see for the future of recreation programs and services? And that became the driver for the determination of what amenities and facilities were necessary to support that. We looked then at funding, that's the new part of it, basically from now on, is kind of, and, and these bullets are the things we've dealt with since July, a partnership assessment, what the implications are from an operations and staffing perspective, to, in a sense, uh, move forward with the plan, and then kind of an implementation process for, how do we get from where things sit tonight to, uh, eventually, if, if the will of, um, the city and, uh, and certainly the residents are to move this project forward, what does it look like over the next five-plus years to accomplish that? So those were the goals of the study, we've touched on basically all that was there and listed. Let's kind of go back and touch this very briefly on the physical assessment aspect of that. Opsis Architecture, uh, accomplished this, they, uh, reviewed, uh, the information was put together on the analysis on the physical aspects and limitations of each of the three facilities, from the Community Center, to the Aquatic Center, to the Senior Center. Um, Opsis made a determination, based on not only their observations, but on those previous reports, that in fact, um, the Community Center should be replaced, the Aquatic Center should be replaced, and the Senior Center really was in pretty good shape, it needed a small renovation and expansion. Uh, you see the charts up there, those were, uh, where we looked at, uh, what the cost implications were of either doing some renovation of those facilities or replacing them. You might remember in July, we presented this information, uh, spent quite a bit of time with that, and we used that as kind of the determination of, of how to proceed with this. We also did an analysis of the recreation programs and services that are currently offered, uh, by the city and by, uh, Parks and Recreation. Kind of the chart on the right side kind of summarizes where you have programming in certain, uh, traditional areas of recreation services. Uh, we kind of took that information in a quantitative form and kind of developed some analysis, the, kind of the summary art is, uh, you know, what are the strengths? Well, they're in youth programming, youth sports, which is really outdoor, aquatics, certainly with the pool, seniors with the senior center, and what we call self-directed activities, opportunities for people to recreate on their own, it's not necessarily program-driven. We talked about areas of weaknesses, being kind of in the cultural arts areas, educational programming, which a lot of cities don't necessarily do all of these, and every city, regardless of their size or their, uh, resources, have weaknesses, and, and it's virtually impossible in this day and age to deliver all the services that are required within a community, uh, without relying on other providers as well. So we identified the other areas that were maybe considered weaknesses, not necessarily, again, that the city needs to take on a role in each of those particular areas. So that, again, we kind of went over that in our July meeting. We also spent a great deal of time, uh, especially in, in May and June, on really gaining a lot of different public input. We spent quite a bit of time, uh, kind of presenting the results of that, and certainly, that's kind of the real pillar of, of information that we use to make the recommendations moving forward. We talked to community leaders, we talked to a variety of different recreation interests, uh, potential partners, uh, kind of the underrepresented areas of communities, uh, you know, the users of facilities, people who don't use facilities, and just as many citizens as we possibly could through this process. We had an online questionnaire that went out in May and June, we had over, almost fifteen-hundred people respond to that, that was a very strong response rate, gave us a lot of good information. We did the key leader interviews in May and June, and a lot of people in this room and up at the front dais were part of that process. Uh, we had focus groups in, uh, early May, we gathered some additional information. So what did we learn? Some of the highlights that we heard out of that is that, um, we were certainly curious what people wanted to see in terms of programs and services moving forward, and we looked in here, and just as an example, one of the excerpts from the, um, uh, survey, we're talking about where people want to see additional programs, you know, and things like after-school programming, sports programming, the list goes on from there, I won't go over that in, in huge detail. We asked where some of the priorities were for, as it related for things like senior services, and, uh, we noted in here that, uh, you know, they were kind of non-traditional type things, with a lot of interest in aquatics and fitness. The social aspects were important as well, but, you know, kind of a different approach, and certainly, seniors are utilizing the existing aquatic center now, and, uh, so they thought that was important as well. So out of this, then, when we started to say, "What were the implications of, uh, kind of the needs and expectations for programs and services?", well, it was really a demand for more, kind of, active youth space, and more gymnasium areas in particular to support sports, uh, to support fitness and exercise, and also youth programming, both after-school and youth camps. Really, a, a demand for more indoor and outdoor recreation space across the board that came out of the, kind of, the public process. So, what were some of the keys and we got out of this process, as it meant for, uh, you know, McMinnville in, in general? Well, people had very strong opinions about facilities and the need to upgrade those to have better opportunities to expand recreation. People wanted to see, um, you know, a hub facility, something that would be an area that, uh, residents could gravitate to for recreation purposes, need to look at the future in terms of what that meant, realization that there's shifting demographics within not only McMinnville itself, but the surrounding, uh, service area that you have. We went through kind of, in July, some of the demographic information that we had, uh, put together as part of that, a little bit on the economic impact, and the importance of serving and attracting not only residents but non-residents, as well as the tourist market as well. And certainly, uh, we talked about attracting, uh, new employees and new businesses, and the importance of partnerships as part of this whole process. So that was kind of the, some of the summary data that we got out of that process. I'm not gonna read all of this, but these were kind of really the facility vision and values. This was kind of the overall, overarching kind of summary of what we heard, some of the key points that came out of this process. Uh, the, the consultant team took this information that you see on this slide, worked with this pretty extensively to say, "All right, so what does this really mean moving forward in terms of, uh, what that means for not only the types of programming in the future that the department should provide, but also what does that mean from a facility standpoint?" You may remember, also in July, we started to talk about, so, how does the city wanna proceed with some of this information, and we were looking certainly for your impact, or, excuse me, input, which you gave us very clearly at that, uh, at that time, and we talked about what the city's role should be, what was your level of, of financial commitment out of that process. Um, we gave you three different scenarios, one that was kind of a status quo, not really doing much of anything, just improving what you have, uh, certainly, we talked about the limitations of the existing facilities with that. We talked about, uh, kind of a combination of new and old, where we replaced the two facilities that were recommended for replacement, and combined those into one facility, and that was basically, obviously, the Aquatic Center and the Community Center. But we kept the Senior Center, made some improvements and renovations to that, but that building was still viable as, as, um, in its current physical form. We talked about some of the pros and cons of that. The last one was basically replacing all the facilities, and you very clearly told us that you wanted us to look at this option that's on the screen right now, is the combination. So, we took then, the information, and we talked about this concept and started to move it forward. So, as we started to shift gears after the July meeting, we started to figure out, so, what does this mean in terms of what should happen as regards to recreation programming in the future for, uh, Parks and Recreation Department? Need to continue to provide programming in the areas of senior activities, adult and senior enrichment program, gymnastics, competitive swimming. Those were identified, again, through the process of being important to that. We need to expand and diversify a number of other existing programs, and again, I won't go through those in great detail, but you see a pretty long list there, and it's a lot of what you've been doing now, but people found that of value and of importance to them in any new facilities or any new focus on recreation services. In terms of new areas and new areas of focus, uh, again, what we heard was increasing, uh, what we call gym sports, obviously, activities that are based out of gymnasium-type spaces, uh, specialty sports, again, uh, child and youth, cultural arts, uh, focus on multi-generational, uh, kind of, uh, intercultural activities, special events, teens, a whole lot, again, different options, a wide range of activities that are listed up there as part of that, also including a potential library as part of this process as well. Um, other kind of more pilot programs, things to kind of, uh, check out and see and, and touch on to see if there's really demand for these types of services that are out there, and these are a little more broader-based in some of their focus, and again, I won't go through those in detail, but once again, a pretty broad-based listing as part of that. So, with that information, then, the project team started to say, "All right, if we're going to look at replacing, uh, the existing aquatic center and the community center, and putting that into one facility that has both of those types of uses, what does that mean in terms of just basic amenities?" Well, for aquatics, it was having both a, a competitive lap pool, as well as a warm-water program slash leisure pool. The two basic bodies of water that are there now, but actually, what you'll see is a little bit bigger than what's currently in place. For active use, gymnasium space, and a more functional and usable gymnasium than what's currently at the center, the walk-jog track being important, gymnastics room to support, really one of the larger programs that, uh, the department has, uh, weight cardio space, what we call functional training, personal, uh, training area, a group exercise studio, uh, two basic sizes for those spaces that'll support not only adult fitness classes, but dance classes, multi, uh, excuse me, um, martial arts classes and those types of things as well. We also had community spaces, uh, multipurpose rooms, kitchen space, basically, it was replacing some of the areas that are upstairs, if you will, in the existing community center that aren't overly functional, uh, crafts and classrooms, uh, community flex space, after-school programming, drop-in child watch area, that's for users of the facility to drop their, uh, children that are under ten years old, and an indoor playground. We also needed to have the support spaces, uh, for these type of, uh, facilities, everything from locker rooms to storage to office space, and everything else that goes with that, just to keep the facility functioning. So we developed these spaces and started to put, uh, sizes to them to really, again, support the types of programming that you saw. So this is kind of the summary document, this is the first half of it, that started to look at the square footage allocation, the number of spaces that might be included in this facility. Now, this is very much just a very first step in this process of trying to identify what a kind, a, a combined facility might have in terms of amenities. Uh, this is not the finished product, by any stretch of the imagination, it's really kind of a, a stepping-off point. So again, it took those different areas and now broke it down into a little more detail. So, as it relates to, uh, aquatics, a competitive pool, a twenty-five by twenty-five, so you get ten lanes, uh, instead of the eight lanes in the yard configuration, so it's adding, you know, two more lanes than what's there now. We have the leisure pool, which is a bigger space, uh, than what's currently, uh, in the program pool area, almost double the size of that. Gymnasium space you see in there, again, that's, that's actually larger than the usable, uh, kind of floor spaces in the existing gym. We have a full-size gymnastics room, again, the weight cardio space, some of the other, uh, fitness amenities as well. And on the second page is the identification of the community spaces, their approximate sizes, and again, all the support spaces that have to go with that. So we end up with the facility, it's around a hundred and two thousand square feet. That's a big facility, but to keep in mind, you know, you have about ninety-two thousand or so, you have, if you subtract out, um, the senior aspect, you're at about eighty-two, eighty-three thousand square feet. So yes, we're bigger, but we're not, you know, twice the size by any means. We, we've grown that, we've increased the sizes, we have more functional space than currently what's in about the eighty-three thousand square foot that's in those, uh, two buildings right now. So, that was kind of our identification of, ultimately, at least where we sit today, what that building should include with a combined, again, aquatic, kind of, recreation center-type facility. Our attention then turned to, well, in order to accomplish this, what did it mean in terms of partnerships and potential funding options to get this done? Always tough issues with any type of facility of this nature. So we started looking at, especially related to partnerships, some of the key resources were important. So as we started to talk about what partnerships might be possible, it was, uh, importance of things like, can a partner bring land or provide a location for a facility? Can they provide some form of capital funding potentially for the project? Are they gonna be what we call an equity partner? Or they could have the ability to provide some type of operational funding to help offset the cost of operation of the facility? Could provide some type of staffing or other expertise, either through, uh, the professionals that they have as part of their organization, or even, in, in the case of some of the college aspects, uh, student labor, and also some, uh, expertise coming out of some of the educational, uh, areas of the universities and colleges that are present. Do they provide, uh, a community identity, and do they help develop support for the project within the community, and do they have existing relationships with the city? Quick kind of list, if you will, of, of the partnerships that we evaluated, uh, not meant to be all-inclusive, there may, through this process as moving forward, may find that there's other partners that are out there, but these are actual partnerships that we either talked to the folks involved with these different organizations, and/or did an assessment of the likelihood of some type of a partnership on kind of a pros and cons basis. So it's, it's a pretty good listing, it's a pretty broad base of types of, uh, organizations and entities in your community now. So we had that. One of the summary documents, and I don't pretend that you can read this out of, uh, this, but it's, it's in the report, and it's kind of a graphic that looks at, on down the left side, the, each of the partnership that we just showed you earlier, again, where they potentially bring to the process, again, those kind of reas- those key resources that we showed earlier, and there's checkmarks for each one of those in terms of what they have. Their location within the community in the first column, and also kind of what the existing relationship is, uh, with the city and with Parks and Recreation. So it's kind of a, a quick scan, if you will, that summarizes the data we gathered from each of these, um, organizations and on a possible partnership. So that was the partnership assessment. The funding piece, same type of deal, we looked at a variety of different options for potentially funding this type of a facility, not only from a capital development standpoint, but also from an operational aspect. We list there a lot of different options, it's not to, meant to be, again, all-inclusive of every option that's out there, but these are kind of the more obvious ones that I have some opportunity to fund some portion potentially of the project. It's everything from tax increases and tax dollars, to outside sources through donations and grants, to even potentially looking at some state funding appropriation. So we tried to be pretty thorough and broad-based in the approaches for how that funding, uh, might work. We did kind of an assessment of what the impacts are from some of those different options that are there, certainly as well as the fact that the partners could provide some of that also. So again, one of the graphics that came out of this, then, was, "All right, we look at the partners, and we look at, um, again, up above the, uh, the graphic that looks at where they might be able to provide some type of asset, uh, or funding option for the project." Uh, the solid colored, uh, dots represent, uh, kind of, ones that are, for lack of a better term, more realistic, or ones that are, are currently being utilized, and then at the bottom, under that kind of midline, that mid, kind of, uh, dark blue line there, are the different funding options and the ones that are potentially possible, uh, and may be able to provide some funding for those different aspects of the project. So once again, it's kind of just a quick summary of the different, uh, uh, funding aspects, not only from the partnership side of these, of the equation, but also from the other funding options that are available. The other next big thing was, "Okay, so, we decide, you decide, the community decides you wanna move forward with actually developing a new facility, what does this mean, not only in terms of, of operating a facility, but also providing the programs and services that we identified earlier? So what is the, the operational implications of this, both in terms of just dollars, but also from a staffing perspective?" The first graphic represents where you are right now, and the different budget accounts that are part of Parks and Recreation, where your expenses and revenues are using the two thousand seventeen, eighteen actuels, rather than the actual, well, not actual, using the budget numbers, so these are the last years that we have for the actual dollars spent, the actual revenues gained. And then what we did is we looked at, "Okay, what is it gonna mean to bring a facility of this nature onboard, to do some small expansion to the senior center?", which we kind of glossed over, but that would have about a three thousand square foot addition, uh, to it, to kind of, uh, deal with some of the issues of moving to the back space, increasing kind of that main community room area as well. Not a lot, but it would help improve just the functionality of that facility, so we didn't just gloss over the fact that there are some needs for the senior center as well. But anyway, we looked at what the operational implications were with that. But anyway, we looked at what the operational implications were with that. This is kind of the all-in budget, if you will. This includes not only existing expenses and revenues, but new ones as well. The key thing is, if you look real quick, do some quick math, we look at the difference between expenses and revenues, you're basically looking for another 400, something about $410,000 in terms of additional expenditure to the city and existing budget accounts to bring the facility online, as well as the expansion in programs and services. We took those numbers then and said, okay, so over a five-plus-year period, when do we see these expenses potentially taking place? So we kind of grouped them into years one and two, years three and four, and years five plus. And certainly, the heavy lifting is in years five plus, and that's basically with bringing online at that particular point, the full new facility. So we tried to give you an idea, and it starts out with the implications from a budget standpoint, a pretty minor within the first couple of years, and certainly starts to ramp up as we move further through the timeline. Staffing is part of this, and with the facility and also with the new programs and services that are brought onboard, we do see an increase in staffing. Currently, in the 2019, 2020 budget, you have 10 full-time staff members in Parks and Recreation. We're looking, by the time you get to the five-year-out standpoint of adding another seven full-time staff, and again, some of that's from the facility standpoint, a lot of it's from the program and service delivery side of things to increase the programming opportunities that'll come out of this facility as well. That's included in the estimates that we showed you earlier. That's really the major, as it is in almost any Parks and Recreation budget, the major aspect of the budget number. Excuse me. We also developed a very quick kind of org chart representing those positions. The green is indicative of existing full-time staff. The kind of pinkish, creamish color are two positions that we'd see possibly being kind of new job descriptions. And then the blue positions are those new seven positions, if you will, coming onboard as part of the process as well. So the last part of this then was, all right, so with everything we've shown you, how do you start on the process of saying, if there's a desire to move forward with this, how do we start to accomplish that? Again, we've broken this down from an implementation standpoint into short-term process in terms of the first two years, midterm, which is years three and four, and then long-term, which is five years out. That kind of matched up with the budget numbers we showed you earlier. We have kind of three different areas in each of these. We have programming, which obviously talks about what it's going to mean to increase programming opportunities, facilities, what it's going to mean to operate, manage, maintain the facilities, and then kind of another category, which are just different aspects of that. So in the first two years, we really start talking about doing some of the groundwork for this process, developing a long-term programming plan. And that's kind of, again, a roadmap for how you're going to implement some of the programs and services, talks about where you're going to focus your programming efforts in the short term, where you can expand programming areas. And then we also start, the big one in there, starting to really look at partnering opportunities, not only for the program side, but you'll see as that means to the facilities as well. Establishing the adequate operating budget to support all this, we identified that earlier. And then now also potentially looking at coordinating services with the library. From a facility standpoint, again, this is under the premise that the city is wanting to move forward with this project, is that you commit to building a new aquatic recreation center and doing the senior center expansion, you complete the next phase of the study. There's a lot more work to be done than what we've shown you tonight, if you're wanting to move forward with the really kind of determining what this all means. Completing a planning study for the expansion of the senior center, obviously much smaller in nature. We start talking about what the funding plan would be, the partnership rules, which are going to be incrementally important in determining the future direction of this project. Ultimately, what happens to the existing two facilities that would be replaced, determining a possible date for a bond election. And the premise is that there will have to be obviously public dollars, at least for a portion of this project of this nature. And ultimately, establishing an action committee made up of community representatives to move a project forward, especially if it goes to a bond where obviously the city's limited what you can do once you've set that question. Other short-term things were, in the other category, is recruiting a more fluent Spanish-speaking staff, establishing a hiring plan for the new full-time and part-time staff positions that we've identified through this process. So that's the first couple of years. We start to ramp things up when we get to years three and four. The programming aspect now starts to become more intensified. We start to look at really now in growing, extending programs in a number of different areas. We start to really track, you know, the results of these efforts to make sure that they've been effective in the direction that the department's heading. And we really, again, are looking at having the adequate budget that we've identified earlier to really support this growth, continued growth in programming. The facility standpoint, and again, this is assuming that we continue to move forward, is now the facility would move in years three and four to actually the complete design of the facility. You'd only start on actual design once they're funding in place and the city's committed to making this project a reality. And it probably is not just the city, it's probably other partners and organizations as well. You develop formal partnership agreements. You'd actually ultimately, obviously, once the design is done, bid the construction of the facility, as well as the senior center expansion, plan for the operations aspect for that. You'd actually complete the expansion of the senior center during that timeframe. Obviously, it's much smaller in nature, can be done much more quickly. And you actually start construction of kind of the aquatic center, and that's probably close to the end of year four. And you start to developing a transition plan that says, how are we going to, in a sense, move from our existing facility over to the new one as well? Some others, updating the fee policy to reflect the new programs and services, developing a marketing plan for the department and the programs, as well as the facilities themselves, having the right job descriptions now to match what's going to occur in the facilities. Actually hire a marketing coordinator, and you hire your facility manager once the facility's under construction. And finally, in year five plus, you actually now, programming, you start to move forward with the programming that's really now can be represented by the new facility. You're really able to kind of do all the things we've identified because you have the amenities within the facilities now to support the full range of program that was identified earlier. You actually now are starting to look at operating the facility itself. You open the facility, obviously have to have the operational budget to go with the facility to make that happen. You start to do some other things in terms of putting a lifecycle replacement plan in place that says, we make sure we can keep the facility new and operating with, in years five, 10, 15 down the road. And finally, we get through the hiring process of the necessary staff prior to the opening of the facility to make sure that the programs and services and the rest of it is adequate, we have adequate staff to make that happen. Again, having a strong training program, educational program for staff will be critical, and making sure you have clear staffing requirements in place for the new facility. So that real quickly is kind of where we are on the study right now. You have the draft report, and we're prepared to make any revisions that are necessary to this, then issue the final report. It's then in your hands. We're happy to help you along the route, wherever you decide to go with this. But that's kind of the overview of the process and what's taken us since about early Jan, well, I'd say mid-February or March, we actually started the process.
Thank you, Ken. Again, in your packets, counsel, you've got the full final strategic plan on this. But at this point, let's stop and ask questions and start a dialogue. I know, Zach, you had a few questions that you indicated that you had, so why don't we start with you?
Thanks, great work. I'll jump right into my questions. I got a handful of questions for you and the team and maybe staff, and then I've got a handful of questions for this group, but maybe I'll just do the staff questions or your questions, and then we can have our own discussion after that. In no particular than the chronology in which I read and wrote my notes, jumping right into the question about gymnasium, how does that plug into programming and future needs? Currently, we use our, it's hard to break apart my thought process from what it's going to look like to what it looks like now, but I worry now we have a multi-useless space, to steal a term from a friend, and how does that plug into a future program? Is it something that's just a basketball surface, or do you foresee that as a multi-use, actual multi-use space?
Yes, we, you know, gymnasium is more of a multi-use space. Certainly, a lot of the focus is on the more active elements, but it could support a number of different activities, some of them not necessarily sports-based on that. I think one of the dangers is, and certainly one of the shortcomings we saw with your existing gymnasium spaces, a little too multi-use, if you will, so that probably took that too far, so it didn't really function, as you said, very well for much of anything. So there's limits to what you can do, but we absolutely don't want to see that be strictly something that's identified as, oh, well, that's where you go play basketball, or that's where you go play volleyball, or even pickleball. It's more than that. As we say, it's a big-based space, opportunity to do a lot of things, it actually provides a very strong platform for providing a lot of different types of programming.
Okay, thank you. On page 61, where you run through partners, again, I think you pointed out that you weren't intending on listing all of them, but it seems a big one that we could include. This discussion point is MEDP as a potential recruitment tool for bringing businesses that we don't currently have here as a great amenity. I'd see that plugging in well with them and the industrial promotions that they're after in trying to bring people here. Page 61, you hammer around on tourism and the use of, potential use of TLT dollars. I know something we've talked about before is starting to bring some more towards tourism-related facilities or tourism-related activities. In your experience out and about, have you seen any successful use on something like this with TLT dollars?
Absolutely. It is. Make no mistake, in most instances, it's, you're not going to fund a facility totally out of that, you certainly wouldn't here either. But yes, it can be used, and there's a lot of examples across the United States where TLT or some form of that has been utilized to help fund either the capital and/or the operations of these facilities.
I'd like to see, maybe this is more of a staff question, but a map, sort of a timeline and roadmap of, I know you guys highlighted a total of what our existing bond service is, but maybe a map of when those things started, what the value was, and when they phase off to help in the thought process of when we phase new ones in, if that's the route we choose. The consultant, I'd like to hear what your take is on park and rec districting, and you talked about it in the packet. You have more depth and breadth of knowledge on that. Do you see that being a success specifically to our area?
It really depends. There's pluses and minuses to that. Certainly, from the perspective of, I guess, the pros to that, the city provides a lot of services to a pretty big geographic area, large part of it that's outside, obviously, of the city limits. So you're a regional provider of activities with the existing facilities. You know, setting up a recreation district allows you to have a broader base of support potentially, depending upon where you set those boundaries for a project of this nature, doesn't have to even just be the project. It can be, go beyond that. And it gets more towards the people that are actually utilizing your services, and that's why most of the time it's being utilized. On the other side, it sets up another layer of government. You have a mid-range in there. It's also something that you, as mayor and council, have to feel comfortable with, that you're willing to, in a sense, give that up. And that's now kind of out of your control on that. You know, requires, you know, citizen support, voting in the concept of a district, supporting, again, the indebtedness, the taxation, if you will, to do this. So it's not an easy step. There's certainly examples in Oregon, very strong examples of where that's been very successful, but, you know, it takes a lot of planning to accomplish that. So I think that it's probably something that deserves more study. There's not necessarily a right or wrong answer to that. It's just a determination of whether that, in effect, is going to meet your particular needs and expectations on both the positive and negative side. In theory, the big reason is you're going to have a broader base that's paying in, that matches up a little bit more with your actual user demographics in terms of who you're serving. So the impact on residents of the city of McMinnville would be potentially less, but now other folks are going to have to opt into this district that are outside of your jurisdiction.
And Zach, just to, we have a city close to home that has a recreational district, Newburgh. We could garner a lot of information from that, I think.
Not included in your timeline, not included in your calculus of the park and rec district and not included in your timeline is, if we chose to go out that route, I imagine that would then move that timeline automatically farther down.
Yeah, in theory, I think it could add another year to, potentially, to your timeline. Just to go through the steps to get the district set up is going to probably, my guess is, be a minimum a year, if not two-year process.
Right, okay. Do the question, can you apply the park and rec utility fee to only a certain sector, like commercial or industrial? You talked about it being a sort of applied at a broad base. I don't know.
My understanding, and again, it's unfortunate that Cindy isn't here because there are more of the expertise on that than I am. My understanding, and that's all that is, is yes, there is abilities to decide how and where you want to apply that, but I don't take my word for that.
Deal. You talked about, I remember on the page, but when you started getting into staffing build-out, a marketing coordinator, I struggled understanding that fully. Can you speak a little bit more about that?
Yeah, that's always a good one. I was kind of, I figured that you guys would be bringing that up pretty quickly. You know, one of the things I always bring up, and it's kind of my mantra, I guess, over the years of this, is that so much of what local government does is not a decision for your residents. I mean, if certain things, if they want, if they're going to, they have to, they have to basically get that from the city. You're the sole provider of a lot of the basic things, so it's not a big thing. Recreation's not that way, whether they're taking classes or programs or utilizing facilities. That's a decision that residents as well as non-residents make, how they want to use their time and their dollars. So with that, over the years, local government has been slow to understand the importance in many cases of having a well-heeled marketing program in place to make sure that people understand what services are available, how that's being done. You know, what we're talking about here is ratcheting up the game from where you are right now in terms of the financial commitment to this, both in terms of capital dollars and operational dollars, and we want to make sure you're getting the full value out of that. Do you have to do that? No, that's ultimately your decision. There's certainly cities and districts that don't have that. I think it would highly be worth your while to do that. I think you would reap the benefits of that in terms of additional usage, additional revenue, and ultimately making sure that your facilities are operating and your programs are operating as best they can in terms of serving needs and also generating the required revenue. So that's why it's there. That's always kind of a flashpoint for the local government.
Do you, thank you, do you have a temperament on, with a small part of the project that we're talking about, but perhaps a big project to a certain amount of people? Do you have a sense of the temperature of the seniors at the senior center about the renovation and their excitement for it, or their addition, if it's part of the program?
Well, Ann may be able to answer more on the day-to-day interactions with visitors at the senior center. Karen from the Friends of the Senior Center was here earlier, she may still be here. We're meeting with them regularly, and I think they're excited about it. I think the idea of it being co-located maybe at Warman Park is also something that's appealing to them. That's something that came up in the July discussion a little bit. So there's, I think, I would also say there's kind of momentum growing in that regard.
I think that wraps up my questions. I think that wraps up my questions for the consultants. I don't want to monopolize their time, so, but I have other questions.
So why don't we go down the dais and see if there's any specific questions for the consultant, because we can check with staff. And so Sal, do you have any specific questions for the consultant?
Yeah, I have a couple. Thank you.
Pull your mic.
I hide the mic because I have a big mouth and I don't want to hear what I say most of the time. Thank you for this work. It's really comprehensive and I, it kind of helps me to make some decisions, but I did have some questions. Zach brought up the marketing coordinator, but the staffing that this recommendation calls for is a, seems to me, very substantial increase in staffing, like triple the number of staffing. Am I reading the report correctly?
No, I mean, right now, it's, it is a sizable increase, but again, the graphic we showed earlier, I mean, you have basically 10 full-time staff right now. We would be adding seven, so we're not tripling, we're not even doubling, but it is about a three, you know, three-quarters, if you will. So it's, you're adding seven to, you're going to, from 10 to 17.
Okay, so in the report where you're identifying staffing positions, those aren't necessarily new staffing positions, they're just positions that are necessary for the facility.
Yeah, all the green ones are existing.
Got it.
And even, well, the green and the cream color, it's only the blue ones that are new positions.
Yeah, I wasn't using the org chart, but the other portions, but that answers my question. Thank you on that. Marketing coordinator Zach asked for... The only other questions I had related to the bond rate, the current bond expires this year?
The park and the $9 million parks and open space bond, I think, is what you're talking about. Sunset's in 2021, I believe. The $9 million, so the last park that we built, we expect the Jay Pearson Neighborhood Park to be the last new park built with that.
With that, with that funding, okay. And then the other options, among the other options that you mentioned, increasing system development charges on new development for parks, and that's been indicated that McMinnville's on the lower end for STCs. Do you know when we increase STCs, can you do it as well, just specifically to parks, or does it have to be a general increase?
Can I jump in there? Jeff also asked me to repeat the questions so that we can make sure everybody's hearing them, including Councilor Drabkin. So the question was, can we increase parks' STCs outside of the full STC? So we do have a separate parks ordinance on that piece of it. It would require us going back through a new methodology, looking at the plan, and building in the capital improvement plan from that, and then setting the rate. I think one of the other places where we have an opportunity is we do not currently charge park system development charges on commercial and industrial projects, only residential. So depending on how we craft that plan, we can also expand the, sort of, the touch of the collecting STCs.
Thank you, Susan. And then parks maintenance fee, is that, that's not something we currently charge, and that would get added to like a MAC water and light bill? Is that the gist of what you said?
I mean, that's kind of the, the park utility fee aspect was a pretty big generalization. There's a lot of different ways that can be done. There's also some limitations on how that can be done, but it just allows you to potentially assess additional charges attached to some form of the utility payment. You'd have to decide what, how much, a lot of different aspects, but it's just another way to attach that to that. I think in the report, it uses Medford as an example on that in terms of what was done, as well as West Lynn. And that's just some examples.
So, what do you think, are park STCs built, they're already low, the increase is already needed? I guess that's a question for Susan, if you don't mind, if I can ask that.
Sure, so Councilor Drabkin was asking if our already, if I understood it correctly, the fee that we currently charge for system development charges for parks, that rate is low in addition to it not being charged on multiple types of projects, so correct. We have a lot of room to grow in the system development charge arena in terms of revenue, but I don't know that it's going to be a huge portion of what we need to be looking at.
Yeah.
Even if we maximize everything in that, in that area.
The last question I had related to the creation of a new recreation district, do either of you know whether, what the implications of that would be for compression under measures five and 50? Would that be a way to take the compression off of city taxes?
So, question is related to ability to establish a new district. It's going to be driven by how large the district is, what the assessed value of the district is, what the rate is for that district. We've got relatively little compression in McMinnville right now, and probably close to $2 capacity for nongovernmental property taxes, as we're having a conversation about the possibility of a rural fire district. We have to keep that in context as well, certainly with a couple of competing districts, we could get to compression relatively quickly.
So the districts do add to the city's load for compression?
Yes, so, yeah, so if the district overlaps the city, there'd be competition for that $10 of governmental tax authority that exists.
Got it. Thank you.
And then Councilor Drabkin has a question on this issue too, Susan.
Councilor Drabkin, did you have another question about this?
I didn't have any, no, that was all, thank you.
She said that was all she had.
Okay, Adam?
First, thank you for the comprehensive report, this one as well as your one in July was awesome. I definitely could, in July, I was definitely in favor of a new facility, under the pretense that it was going to be more efficient, and so I took that efficiency as that we were going to have lower labor costs. Going from 10 full-time to 17 full-time is a little shocking, given that labor is our most expensive thing we have in the city. So I would like to see if we move forward, a way to maximize any FTEs that we do add. I still would be in support of moving forward to the next step and seeing what the actual cost was and what partners we could get to the table, but I do have pause in the costs associated with it, and that we could be pricing out some of our users through elevated fee schedules, some future development through STCs, as well as just cost of living in the city through a substantial bond. But all in all, I would like to at least put all the information in front of us, have a community dialogue, and you've put a lot of data in front of us with this report and July, but there's a lot more work to do before we could say we're putting up a new facility, so.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it, but we have more work to do.
Thank you, Adam. Council President?
Well, I just want to thank you, everyone else, for the great work on this. I found it very interesting, and I too was a little dismayed at the increase in staffing, considering that the buildings hopefully would be significantly more efficient, but I assume the greater use would probably explain that. I'm just curious, I mean, I know we don't know a total cost and everything, but how much debt could we assume on a general obligation bond as a city?
So what we'll do is we'll get you a better answer about what that is. I can tell you that we're nowhere close to our statutory debt capacity, so we really do have a lot of capacity to issue and incur debt. Obviously, there's a cost of that, and there's a, there's a, both an operational and a political calculus about what that cost is, but we do have a lot of debt capacity in the organization. But we'll do a more formal report on that and let you know what the, you know, what our debt payments are over the next X number of years, and where we see there being either increases or decreases, and how much total capacity we still have.
And then, just finally, kind of as a com-comment, I think you've kind of strategized the one to two years, three to four, and five years and beyond. There's no real talk about the soft costs of the public's involvement and the council's involvement, and I kind of feel like that should at least be addressed. You know, what are we going to need? If we decide to do a general obligation bond, what will it take to sell it? What kind of staff time is going to be involved in trying to deal with the partnerships and council time on that one too, and public time? I just, I think we ought to at least be thinking in terms of that, because I think a lot of times we make these decisions kind of in a vacuum, like, oh, okay, if I say yes to this, it'll happen, you know? But there's definitely going to be a cost for everybody who's involved in it, so I'd kind of like people to have that feeling of understanding. But thank you. I think it's well thought out to this point. I'm really thrilled with it.
Thank you, Kelly. From my perspective, you know, as I look at the data tables and I look at what indoor recreational activities are most important to the city of McMinnville to support, and by your numbers, 70%, almost 70%, we're looking at indoor swimming, competition lessons, and water fitness, and I think that's shown by who's in attendance here today also. My question is, you've talked to some of our partners out in the community with the school district and possibly Linfield College that has similar assets. I know the school district doesn't have a swimming pool, so they rely on the city. What is the temperature of being able to possibly partner with assets that aren't being used full-time for city use? I know Saturday, I had an opportunity to go through the new high school and look at their recreational facilities, and that gymnasium is amazing. The training facility's amazing, jazzercise rooms, dancing rooms. I envision is, that's probably what we might be looking at a little bit in our buildup of assets. So did we have any conversations from that perspective?
Our initial discussions, and they were pretty high, you know, upper level in terms of just where we were in detail and just more, you know, touching the surface. There was a lot of interest in not only what it might mean for a new facility, but also working, I think, within existing resources that were there and amenities, and so I think we had a very positive response from most all of the partners, and it, that's actually kind of unusual. A lot of times, we, sometimes even early on in the process, just mark some off there that they just don't have much of an interest. So I think we were encouraged with some initial discussions, both in terms of how to use what you currently have, but also potentially on a new facility. So it's certainly said this was worth, as we've indicated, pursuing on a partnership assessment now, whether that actually comes down to something more formalized. There's a lot more work to be done on that. But I think where we sit today, there's reasons to be somewhat optimistic that something may be able to occur with at least a few of them.
I see our partners just having a true ownership of community.
Yes.
Across the board. It's a uniqueness of McMinnville that many communities do not have, and I think it may be well just to take a look at that as, as an op, it's not going to be the solution, absolutely, but there's some options there that, that we might be able to utilize. Next question would be other communities within the state of Oregon that could be a model for us as to what we're trying to accomplish. I think we're the 17th largest city in the state, with Oregon City, Kaiser as two that are really close in size to us. I know Kaiser has a new community center that has multi-use. Ken, from your perspective, any, anyone that we should maybe could look at as a model of some neat opportunities that they've done?
Well, in terms of other models, if you will, there's a lot of different facilities and different phases of being either constructed or being re-looked at. Hillsborough's in construction right now, a new recreation center in their community. They have one now, but they're adding a second one. Obviously, a much larger community, but that's still in terms of going through the process is pertinent, and that facility is moving forward. It took a long time to get to that.
Yeah.
You know, other communities around you, Woodburn is going through a process right now of looking at doing a potential expansion to their facility, both in terms of aquatics as well as dry site or, you know, other non-aquatic amenities. They're not as far along, well, they're maybe comparable to where you are in the process, so that one's far from definite. I'm trying to think what else.
I know Medford has gone through some...
Yeah, Medford has. I'm not real familiar with what exactly all they've done, but that's one. You know, Bend has done quite a bit. Now, that's a district.
Yeah.
And they've, they have a new facility that's coming online as well, a little different, obviously, funding format and governmental entity standpoint, but, you know, they're there as well. Trying to think.
That just gives some ideas, and I, that's what I was looking for. The last question Ken I would have is, as you've looked at our existing facilities and you've looked at feasibility of, do we go to a new one, do we remodel? The question that I might have is, you know, as we look at Upper City Park, where the aquatic center is right now, is that footprint large enough for us to do a combined community center, aquatic center? I know parking right now is a problem. That doesn't, if we, if we enlarge that, we still have parking, but it's city center, and I, sometimes I think there's some real value in having that kind of draw to the city center. Just wanted to get your feel on that.
Well, as it relates to site, one of the next steps, if the city and you, mayor, wanted to move forward, would be to do a more in-depth analysis of what sites would be feasible and possible. Everything that you suggested about the current location of the aquatic center as it relates to that site are viable concerns. I don't know that we're ready to either say yes, it'll work, or reject that out of hand either. I think that all needs more consideration. And again, I think, as you've all said, there's a lot of work to be done. That's one of the bigger ones, is site. That's also the site question's driven by who the potential partners may or may not be, may have a lot to do with site. So, you know, those are the absolute things that need more, more time to be investigated fully, to determine whether that site or any of the other ones are potentially viable.
Well, I so much appreciate that we're looking at a one to two year, a three to four, and a five year, because it's a phased and it's a work in progress that, you know, we have to work on many, many fronts to be able to get to that end result. Remy, any questions that you might have for Ken that have not been asked?
Councilor Drabkin, do you have anything to add or any questions?
Yeah, thanks. I just, one additional question, I'm trying to think what Kelly was saying.
We're losing you a little bit.
Hold on.
Yep.
Okay, so I just have one more comment really about community involvement, similarly to what Kelly was saying, but kind of on a different part of the process. If I heard correctly, at the beginning, you talked about a sign-up sheet for either the committee or an opportunity to attend committee meetings as the process moves forward. And one suggestion that doesn't really come to me, it's actually feedback I've heard from other community members, is that perhaps we find ways to have more or broader, not broader community involvement, but more specific community involvement when it comes to a number of programs, and not only reaching into the park and rec department, but also reaching into leadership of the community when it comes to things like our community boards, whether it's gymnastics or swimming, so we talk to people that don't work for parks, but that are involved in leadership, and get their input about impacts and how wanting to clean the debt nature early on, and it makes a really huge, really huge effort to hear all of those questions. And Adam, what are the questions that you'd like to talk about?
Susan, can you repeat the question?
Sure, I think it was more of a comment she was saying at the end, but it sounds like there's been some conversations out in the community to make sure that we reach out specifically for community leaders about the programming and right-size that and do more deliberate outreach across the community, bring in people that can, outside of staff... of staff, that can help and participate in the process of giving us feedback about the size and scope of the programs. And she also mentioned that some of the competitive sports groups and some of the other expertise that we have in our community really deliberately include them in that. Did I get that pretty well, Councillor Drabkin?
Nailed it.
Okay, nailed it.
Thank you. Thanks for being so close to the phone to be able to decide for that. It is 7 o'clock right now, and we've had an opportunity to ask Ken our technical questions. If there are any more that have come to you, let's take a few moments and if...
I just had one more question. Opsys was your, was a partner, Opsys Architecture was a partner in this process. I saw later phases, getting near that three, four-year phase of, you know, out to bid for construction, backing up to the architecture and creation of the design. Perhaps it's easier to ask with Opsys not in the room, but what's our commitment to them on that piece? And what does the, is there a bid process for surfaces for architecture?
The answer to that is yes. Your commitment to any of the three of us that are, entities that are on, were part of this process, is effectively over once we deliver your final report. So you have no other obligation to us. So, you know, now it's just subject to basically city standards of how you go about services, but, you know, oftentimes, the design process and other things are bid. And, you know, that's usually the case, and that's certainly your option. There's been no inference in any of this that, that there would be a continuation on for that, and we're all used to the public process of procuring services, so we would expect that.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Just in terms of next steps, you saw we'll be finalizing the report. We tentatively have scheduled to come back to you in two weeks to talk about an advisory committee and the framework of that, because I think one of the first things we need to start doing is right-sizing some of the recommendations that came out in this report and get an official group put in place by you all with appointees that can really help us through the next steps and answer some of these questions that you all have raised tonight. So we'll plan on bringing that back on the October 22nd and answer some of the questions that you gave us as well. And a reminder for anybody in the room or listening, if they could sign up, if they're interested in being on the advisory committee, we have a sheet out in the lobby. I'm sure the Parks and Rec staff will be out there after this, so that they can help get your names and addresses, so we can consider you and bring those names forward in a framework for that advisory committee.
And then I'd also throw out that any citizen, feel free to contact your city councillor within your ward for dialogue or anything you want to be brought before us. Again, this is a long-term program. It's going to take us time. We want the transparency, a lot of communication in this process. We want to listen to our partners and our citizens. Ken, thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
This, you know, you have done a phenomenal job. I've read the report, but I haven't, I haven't had an opportunity to really study it the way I need to. Gives us more time to study this report now that we've gone over it almost one time, one and a half times, and so that when we have our next meeting on the 26th of October, that we'll, we'll be able to truly get into it at a more granular level. With that said, I think what we'll do is we will close our workshop, our work session, and we will convene our city council, let's say, at 10:00 after. Give us a five-minute break for those that want to go home and those that need to use the facility. So I'll go ahead and close our meeting.